Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This common council meeting of the City of Dunkirk to order on this 20th day of February 2024 at 5:30 p.m. Clerk, please conduct the roll call.
Councilmember Luskowiat?
Here.
Councilmember Yeriko?
Here.
Councilmember Stoyl?
He is excused this evening.
Councilmember Nichols?
Here.
Councilmember at large, Wiser?
Here. Thank you, clerk. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you all for being here this evening. Next, we have certification of prior meetings.
This is to certify that an official copy of the minutes of the common council meeting of Tuesday, February 6, 2024, was presented to the mayor on Friday, February 16, 2024. Pursuant to Section 3.03 of the Dunkirk City Charter, all items presented to the mayor are now in full force and effect. Witness herof, I have to set my hand and seal of the City of Dunkirk, New York, this 20th day of February 2024.
Is there a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes and approve them as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Nichols.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Luskowiat. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Luskowiat?
Aye.
Councilmember Yeriko?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Wiser?
Aye. The minutes are approved as presented. We now move to the privilege of the floor.
The privilege of the floor shall be extended to any person appearing for themselves, in which case each individual appearing shall be limited to three minutes, and to any person representing any group who shall be limited to a maximum time of five minutes. The privilege of the floor is reserved for members of the public to speak on any subject pertinent to the affairs of city government. The city clerk shall have the duty of maintaining such time limits, and the chair may determine in his discretion whether individuals are speaking for themselves or representing groups. The chair shall maintain good order and may require any speaker to cease speaking if remarks are made in bad taste or slanderous or not germane. The time limits specified above shall be adhered to, except that the chair may allow any person speaking to complete a statement or thought started before such time expires, and a longer time may be allowed by the chair with the approval of a majority of the council.
Okay. Privilege of the floor is now open. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the council? Please step forward, state your name and address. Going once, twice, privilege of the floor is now closed. Let's move on to communications from the mayor, including disapproval messages. Mayor Doviaz, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, council members. I would just like to remind everyone, including the council and the public, that as of right now, if anybody receives an invoice from Chadwick Bay Marina, they are to pay their invoice. The current operator will remain until a new operator is found or not, I mean, if they are or not found. The current operator needs to be paid for their slips.
Anything further?
That's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Now we'll address communications from the public and petitions.
Number one, requests from Gospel Church to host a worship night on Friday, July 26, 2024, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Memorial Park.
Is there a representative present to speak?
I...
Any questions or comments from the council?
Oh, I just wanted to say they were here last year. It was a positive message. They didn't bother anyone. There were no issues.
Further discussion?
I just, as I talked with you before, Councilman at large, that I didn't know, because according to their letter, that they extend the invitation to the churches in the Dunkirk area, if they would consider moving into where there would be more space, like at the Point for parking and such. And I think that same suggestion was made last year.
Any further discussion? Okay. Do I have a motion to refer to the appropriate departments?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Luskowiat, a second. Seconded by Councilmember Nichols. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Luskowiat?
Aye.
Councilmember Yeriko?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Wiser?
Aye. The minutes are approved as presented. We now move to the privilege of the floor.
The privilege of the floor shall be extended to any person appearing for themselves, in which case each individual appearing shall be limited to three minutes, and to any person representing any group who shall be limited to a maximum time of five minutes. The privilege of the floor is reserved for members of the public to speak on any subject pertinent to the affairs of city government. The city clerk shall have the duty of maintaining such time limits, and the chair may determine in his discretion whether individuals are speaking for themselves or representing groups. The chair shall maintain good order and may require any speaker to cease speaking if remarks are made in bad taste or slanderous or not germane. The time limits specified above shall be adhered to, except that the chair may allow any person speaking to complete a statement or thought started before such time expires, and a longer time may be allowed by the chair with the approval of a majority of the council.
Okay. Privilege of the floor is now open. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the council? Please step forward, state your name and address. Going once, twice, privilege of the floor is now closed. Let's move on to communications from the mayor, including disapproval messages. Mayor Doviaz, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, council members. I would just like to remind everyone, including the council and the public, that as of right now, if anybody receives an invoice from Chadwick Bay Marina, they are to pay their invoice. The current operator will remain until a new operator is found or not, I mean, if they are or not found. The current operator needs to be paid for their slips.
Anything further?
That's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Now we'll address communications from the public and petitions.
Number one, requests from Gospel Church to host a worship night on Friday, July 26, 2024, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Memorial Park.
Is there a representative present to speak?
I...
Any questions or comments from the council?
Oh, I just wanted to say they were here last year. It was a positive message. They didn't bother anyone. There were no issues.
Further discussion?
I just, as I talked with you before, Councilman at large, that I didn't know, because according to their letter, that they extend the invitation to the churches in the Dunkirk area, if they would consider moving into where there would be more space, like at the Point for parking and such. And I think that same suggestion was made last year.
Any further discussion? Okay. Do I have a motion to refer to the appropriate departments?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Luskowiat, a second. Seconded by Councilmember Nichols. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Luskowiat?
Aye.
Councilmember Yeriko?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Wiser?
Aye. Motion carried.
Number two, requests from the Juneteenth 2024 Celebration Committee to use Memorial Park for the 28th Annual Juneteenth Celebration in the City of Dunkirk on Saturday, June 15, 2024, and Sunday, June 16, 2024. Once again, requesting assistance from the City Fire Department and Police Department with demonstrations that have in the past proven to be informational and enjoyable to all.
Any discussion, council?
Yes, I would just like to say that this is a fun time for all. If you've not attended one, please do. It is the committee, I mean, Loretta, they do a great job. Great job.
Any further discussion? Okay. Do I get a motion to refer to the appropriate departments?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Luskowiat, seconded by Councilmember Nichols. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Luskowiat?
Aye.
Councilmember Yeriko?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember... ...vehicle on January 16, 2024 by...
Hearing none, the communication is received and filed.
Number four, loudspeaker permit request from the Gospel Church Fredonia to use amps and speakers at Memorial Park for their worship night on Friday, July 26, 2024, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Any discussion, council? Okay. Do I have a motion to refer to the appropriate departments?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Luskowiat, seconded by Councilmember Nichols. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Luskowiat?
Aye.
Councilmember Yeriko?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Wiser?
Aye. Motion carried. We now move to reports of standing committees, boards, and commissions. Councilmember Luskowiat?
Director of Woodbury, the light at the intersection of Central Avenue and Millard-Filmer Drive near the plaza, will that be fixed in the very near future?
Scheduled to be fixed on Thursday. The controller that was put in when that intersection was made 30 years ago, it finally broke, and a new one's been ordered, and it's scheduled to be delivered and installed on Thursday.
Thank you. The brush throughout the city, any chance for pickup before the usual May scheduled pickup? I know we've got two new people. You're trying to train and...
Yeah, I would say that the first ward and the second ward, being closest to the lake, have a lot of storm damage brush that's still there. So I talked with the guys today and with the new crew and stuff. If we can hold off with the white stuff, then we can get to the wood stuff.
Okay. Okay. Um, yes. Per discussion with the director of the Chautauqua County Land Bank, there are two abandoned boats behind the old school, number 10 on Front Street, that are available for free. I will find a way to dispose of them or someone to take them, but if anybody out there wants one or both, just call me. My number is on the city website. I wanted to clarify that indeed, all of the hero banners, because I've had some response today, all of the hero banners that were up last year will definitely be up again this year. The committee, Hero Banner, City of Dunkirk Hero Banner Program Committee is planning at least a three-year run for all banners, but we are taking the program on a year-by-year basis regarding this because we don't know the supply and demand, what it will be. It doesn't look like we will reach the additional allowed quota for the year. So you never know. And by all means, if a patron wishes to have the banner in their possession, at some point they can. We are currently contacting Niagara Mohawk in order to place banners on Central Avenue beyond Seventh Street, which I'm sure a lot of, some people will like that. Wish us luck. I believe they will grant us that ability. Some poles the city does own and others we do not, all of which has to do with what type of wires and cables are branched from them. And that is all for me today. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Yeriko?
Uh, yes. Alan?
Yes.
Um, there's two garages over in the second ward, the one on the corner of Lake Shore Drive and Brigham, Rabs of Florida. It doesn't appear that the garage is opening a lot, but there's two box trucks that are unplated that are unoccupied, one of which is open, and there's words that people have been squatting in them, so we can take a look into that.
We should go. It's not worth it.
And then the one on the corner of Point Drive North and Lake Shore Drive, which is that Chautauqua Auto Retail or whatever, what can we do to clean that up? Has it...
We can contact them. We have had conversations in the past, and it's gotten better.
Yeah. They're just, and there's oftentimes, I mean, I live right there, so like oftentimes they have like tool trucks that just park in the middle of the road for hours, and I'm sure it's difficult for the plows to get through and such, so just be staying on top of that. That'd be great. Um, chief, how are you?
Good.
Good. Um, I've been seeing tickets on cars. We like to see that. That's good work. Tell you guys we said thanks. And then I just have a safety concern. It's still winter. Those kids are putting their basketball hoops back out in the roads, not getting them moved. I'm just worried that if the snow does come overnight, you know, I don't know if there's anything we do to kind of get those moved off.
I'll have afternoon shift supervisor take a ride around and locate any ones that are moving.
All right. That'd be awesome. And then last, Randy, just to clarify on the brush pickup, nothing set in stone for an earlier date than our traditional May date, correct?
No.
Okay. It's gonna be weather pending if you guys have the time.
Weather pending, and when we, when we can set something in stone, we'll announce it to everybody's wing pass.
Okay. So residents, it's okay for them to put their brush out?
Absolutely.
Okay. And did we end up hiring anybody new?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. How many physicians?
Three.
Three? Excellent. Have they started?
No.
Not yet?
They've had to give two-week notice.
Okay. Great. Awesome. Thank you. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Nichols?
Yes. As DPW chair, I have noticed that several people are having private contractors cut down trees in their yards, and they are then putting the cut logs out at the curb. And I don't know if we can do something about it. I know we need to see it happen to do it, but I just know, and they're quite large that's out there. We're gonna need one of our big, heavy equipment to get that stuff moved out of there.
Yeah. There's a few things we can do, Councilwoman. The, first of all, we need to know about it right away. So if people see this, we can communicate with them. What people should do if they're taking down private trees is to add a little bit more money to the contract so the contractor removes that material. They're really responsible for it. So we could go after the homeowner or even preferably the contractor. They, most of them know that that's, that's part of the deal. So we will, let's, as we see it, let's get ahold of them because there's a lot of stuff out there. I mean, in the first ward and second ward, there's a lot of storm damage that's just storm damage. But then there's some other stuff that's bigger than that, that are trying to take advantage a little bit, and we want to try to nip that.
Well, and as Natalie said, that people are in, Abby, people are asking about the storm damaged branches, and they, they're a little bit upset that we've had some fair weather, and they don't understand that our, when the guys are out at the Point cutting the trees, the dead ash trees down at the Point, it's not the same group of people that would be picking up the branches. So can you clarify that?
Absolutely. We have a streets division and a parks division. The parks are really blitzing the Emerald Ash Board, dead trees at the Point while they can. And then the streets division being, you know, hopefully they won't be as short-handed once we get these additional people on board, and if the weather holds out, we can get to picking up the rest of the, and I would, I think you'd agree that the first and second ward are worse than maybe the third and fourth ward. For the, the storm seemed to have been centered or kind of proximal to the lake.
And I just would like to bring attention to our curbside calendar, that every resident in the City of Dunkirk would have gotten this by mail. One side is English, one side is Spanish. There are additional copies if you should not have gotten one in the clerk's office, and...
We haven't got them yet, but we'll be getting them soon.
Okay. Thank you, Lillian. And soon they will be available at the mailbox on Lucas Avenue where you do your recycling. Valid information is on there, and again, I want to, and I did with Alan today and with Randy, reiterate, the time to put out trash is no earlier than seven, and I've been noticing trash being put out at noon on. Is there any way that we can curtail the noon drop-up? I know, realize, I realize people work second shift, but they usually don't leave until like 2:30 or so, and they don't get out till maybe 1:00 in the morning, and they don't want to disturb their neighbors by banging the trash out to the road. What can you do or tell me?
Happy to announce that our engineering technician, Andy Bone, is released from his shoulder repair, or I'm sorry, elbow repair, and he'll be back tomorrow. He's the one that puts out the notices, and his shift ends at 4:00. So he, and we can work with the building inspector's office too. They work until 5:00, one way or another. On the way here, driving around before this meeting, I saw that it was out before 7:00 in the third ward. And, and we would encourage people not to do that, especially in the windy weather. It just goes all over the place. So I think we communicate on that, let people know not to do that, and be polite with them until we don't have to be polite.
And Chief Bertolano, I noticed also that there's quite a few people that are, and I know there's like an hour, an hour and a half leeway on the alternate parking issue, but people are starting as soon as 3:00 to move their vehicles to the opposite side of the street, which, if we do have another snowstorm, and I know it did happen and your guys did tick it, but they're, it's like a maze trying to get through the street because you've got cars on both sides. And people can't actually back out of their driveway because if they're parked on the opposite side, which would be the, the new day to park on for the next day's parking, it's really a tough turn to get out of the driveways.
So never any fight, but we've been hammering the tickets lately, so we'll keep on it.
Okay. And lastly, I just would like to say, I went down to the boardwalk to welcome Sydney, the new pastry shop down there. I did have a chance to taste her delicious treats, and she is going to be doing orders, taking orders for people. She hasn't set her hours in stone yet. She just did a trial basis on Sunday. She opened at 9:00, and by 10:00 after 11:00, she was sold out. So welcome to the neighborhood, and I'll say something later on with one of the resolutions.
Great. All right. Thank you. Finance committee meeting held last Monday, February 12th, was informative and productive. I'd like to thank everybody in attendance for their input, especially Marsha Beach for her continued work during this period of transition, and to her and the finance director, Ms. Luskowiat, for bringing us up to speed on the budget modifications and the audit timeline. I'd also like to congratulate DPW Director Woodbury on the $30,000 grant your team received for improvements to the wastewater facilities. One topic that arose during that meeting pertained to adjustments in pricing for birth, death, and marriage certificates. We are looking into that, be gathering more data from other municipalities to inform any decisions that are made toward that end. Moving on, it appears there's no unfinished business, so we will now address the prefiled resolutions. Clerk, please introduce Resolution 19-2021.
Number 19 for 2024, resolution authorizing Tree for V, a local community organization to plant trees at Point Grange and Wright Park.
Any discussion, council?
Yes. Mary Louise McGraw, that spearheaded this idea when she came to me a little over a year ago, and I invited her to come to a DPW meeting to meet with Mr. Woodbury and Jason Sislevich and Tim because of the issue of the trees. And we all came to an agreement. She drew, did a thorough job, really, she was, she dotted her i's, crossed her t's, did everything superbly as far as on her end of it, and I suggested that she bring it to us for a resolution approval. And I suggested that she bring it to us for resolution approval so that the only ones that would be planting trees in our city parks would be those authorized by the City of Dunkirk, that not just everyone can get a sapling, dig a hole, and plant a tree. It's just up, they have to get the permission from the right departments and the right people. But she did a phenomenal job. She really, really did. She would have been here this evening, but she had a family emergency, so, because she did want to speak about it. And I'm very proud. They, they, her dedication, or I should say, the sadness when she saw how many hundreds of trees that were devastated by the ash trees perishing with this bore, she, it just, it took her to heart because she goes, was going down there with her two dogs and spent a lot of time, and it hurt her, so she came up with this idea. She's got her committee, she's done everything. I'm very, very proud of what she has done. I mean, it just, it's remarkable with this, what she did with the small group that she has. And hopefully, they can work together well with the revitalized Dunkirk.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, I was, I was just wondering, do you know where the memorial plaques will be placed? Will it be like in the ground or?
Flat on the ground, so that the mowers can run right over them.
Good idea.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll for the vote on Resolution 19-2024.
Councilmember Luskowiac?
Aye.
Councilmember Yeruko?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at-large Wiser?
Aye. Resolution has received sufficient support and is hereby adopted.
Number 20 for 20, for 2024, resolution authorizing budget line modifications for fiscal year 2022.
Any discussion, council? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Luskowiac?
Aye.
Councilmember Yeruko?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at-large Wiser?
Aye, the resolution is adopted.
Number 21 for 2024, resolution authorizing extension of agreement with County of Chautauqua for sewer treatment and disposal services, North County Industrial Sewer District Number One.
Any discussion, council? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Luskowiac?
Aye.
Councilmember Yeruko?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at-large Wiser?
Aye, the resolution is adopted.
Number 22 of 2024, resolution accepting Environmental Protection Fund Smart Growth Community Planning and Zoning Program Award.
Any discussion, council?
Yes, I would like, Vince, if you could give us a brief explanation of this.
I'd be glad to. So back in 2022, we applied for a grant through the Consolidated Funding Application process to, to do a zoning code update. We were awarded, subsequently awarded $75,000. We put out an RFP based on the work plan that the Department of State came back with, and we didn't receive any proposals. It was just too much of a scope of work for any of the consultants to, to want to send us a proposal. We went back, reworked the work plan with the Department of State, and at that same time, I applied for funding through the county, through the Chautauqua County Partnership for Economic Growth, and we were awarded $20,000. So that will add to the $75,000. We now have $95,000, and it's a great partnership with the county, and want to thank the Chautauqua County and Partnership for Economic Growth for this grant.
Thank you, Vince.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Luskowiac?
Aye.
Councilmember Yeruko?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at-large Wiser?
Aye, the resolution is adopted. There are no further matters to address?
I just want, I know the mayor wanted to, and I had asked her if she would speak on resolution for the Tree for Thee with the added little notation of the groups that would, they would have to work with, remember our conversation.
We had a very at length discussion in the mayor's office, and it was agreed upon at that time that a Tree for Thee would provide the necessary insurance documentation that they needed, as well as working with DPW and Parks to make sure that they were planting in the staked-out areas as Revitalize has done in the past. So I think that was the extent of the conversation, just that they would follow the same rules as Revitalize and work with our parks and our unions to make sure that there was no discrepancies on where anything was going to be planted.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Any other new business? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
No.
Moved by Councilmember Nichols, seconded by Councilmember Yeruko. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Luskowiac?
Aye.
Councilmember Yeruko?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at-large Wiser?
Aye, the meeting's now adjourned.